Well, Iowa State's looking pretty good.
Uh, yeah, I don't know. They dropped down to 17th after the loss.
Yeah. They'll still get a term.
Yeah.
Okay, I'd like to call the meeting to order. How long do we have?
Sure, Director James Fairman.
President.
Assistant Secretary Arlene Schaefer.
Here.
Secretary Robert Wooten.
Here.
Vice President Arthur Perry.
Here.
And President Michael Schaefer's excuse from his meeting.
Okay, thank you. Public comments. Mr. Mosier, did you have a chance to... You okay?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, let's move to items of study. Number one, Scott, recycling waste diversion report.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. Happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Hey, we're up a couple thousand tons. And I suppose that's due to the economy turning around. But is there anything we... And potentially, CND waste, which is illegal to be put in our bins. Does staff have any... Or does staff given any thought to why it's up so much? I mean, that's an extra hundred thousand dollars that residents are paying for.
We haven't, but we can look into it and report back if you want to see.
It's staff to look into it, though.
You know what? I think it's because of remodeling.
I thought they just characterized it.
People are remodeling.
That's construction demolition waste, which is illegal to put in our residential trash.
Lawrence, do you have a comment regarding the question?
Was it just the month or...
The year.
Over the year. Previous year?
It's trending up. You know, we were 39,000 tons. This year, it's going to be 41,000 tons.
Yeah, I mean, we can certainly look into it, but that's pretty normal. You know, they trend up. Also, you know, you have a lot more residential buildings being built. It's just going to drive up. And then we also have, you know, additional accounts and things that are growing, so... But we'll definitely look into it further.
Yeah, just a question. I don't know if we have the data figured out.
We can certainly look into it.
Yeah, okay.
Any other comments? Okay, we're just receiving files. Two ordinance enforcement office report.
Good morning, Mr. President, members of the board. For February 2015, identified and documented eight scavenging investigations that were... That I documented from contacts. All of them went well. Nothing of incidents to report. I amended my reporting format per the request of the board. And hopefully, it satisfies your requirements. If there's any changes, please let me know.
That's much better. For me, anyway.
I'm glad.
Look at the dates.
And beyond that, if you have any questions, I try to provide a narrative for each one of the contacts. Just to document what took place. For trash container enforcement, 20 proactive cases with all compliance. Glad to report that most folks with the door hanger tags and our voluntary compliance has been stellar. I haven't had any incidents to really report to my supervisor.
That's good.
Most folks follow with the program. I think we achieve that more by just being very, very citizen accessible. I try to knock on the door and explain where we're coming from, and most folks respond rather well to it.
Is that your plan, always knock on the door and talk to them?
I try to, sir. I think most people respond far better if they understand and they can ask their questions and they can put a face to the district.
That's true. That's real detective.
Thanks, sir.
Any other comments?
Just a quick question. On scavengers, how are we doing with the scavenger end of it? Have you seen any?
Very consistent. I think we just have a revolve, for lack of a better term. We have a population that comes in and out of our community. So, that's one of their main focuses, assessments. So, I think it'll be a continuing problem that we'll be dealing with here for a while.
Do you find many repeat offenders?
Not really. Most of these folks that I come in contact, I make them aware that, you know, the ramifications are citation. If they're not in possession of any ID, I need to call a policeman out or a police officer out to identify them. And I think that right there is detractor. You know, they kind of want to stay away from the police department. And, you know, I've had a couple incidents note, you know, where hostility comes out or bubbles up. And, you know, we're pretty good at deescalating the situation. That's the goal. I won't engage. It's just not worth it for my safety or, you know, for the reputation of the district to engage. I'll back off. But most folks, as long as you come at them professionally politely and for me to understand what we're doing, I'll back off.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Thank you. We'll receive and file. Organics committee, is that Bob?
We reviewed the video that our consultants put together, and it looks excellent. I think the board will get to view this at the board meeting.
Later today.
Pardon?
Later today.
Later today. So, it's a study session. The behavior study, staff was going to meet with Sally the day after we had the organics meeting. So, they can brief us on how that meeting went. CRNR and staff have figured out that there are probably about 2,000... Forty percent of our multifamily residences probably won't be participating in the organics program because they either don't have green waste or there's no place to put an extra cart. Staff have been contacting, it looks like about 10 or 15 local grocery stores and convenience stores regarding importance of having compostable bags when we roll this program out. And there's a difference between compostable and...
Biodegradable.
Bio-degradable bags. So, some of the stores may already have biodegradable bags. And we need to make contact with both the local store managers and potentially the corporate stores, you know, so they better understand. They may understand, but we want them to have compostable bags for use with the organics program. And then we had a...
So, basically, that's paper versus plastic.
Well, there is a type of plastic looking bag that it is compostable. It may say, but it has... You know, it has to be compost... It's not... Bio-degradable takes longer to do than compostable. So, biodegradable can go in the landfill and biodegrade over the years. Compostable has to be something that'll degrade in the 20 days it's in the AD process. And that is the first time I'd heard of that, so... Staff attended a Sowana organics conference in February, and we're pretty enthused about, you know, the amount of time being given to this organics transition in California. And are you going to give a report on that?
Yes, sir.
And then there's a Sowana, another organics conference. And I think staff attended one in Northern California last year. Looks like there's a similar one on organics in Palm Springs in April, the middle of April. And we learned that, well, the startup for the AD process has been delayed till the first part of the fourth quarter due to specialized contractor construction issues. And CRNR has a... What they have is a recycling ranger that'll go out. Once the carts are distributed to the community, the recycling ranger will go see if... Do some visual inspection. And the city has a contract out for bulky item pickup. And, you know, they budgeted $100,000 for it, which is way too little for all that trash collection that ends up in the alleys that is bulky items.
Do you know when that is?
I think it's on the street now.
I haven't seen it.
Anyway, the city's going to have it. They're either rolling it out and/or they're going to roll it out soon. But they've got far too little in the budget.
Have they ever done this before?
Well, they have. They do bulky item pickup. I think... But I think it's city staff. It's overloading city staff.
Do they do commercial?
They do. They do bulky item, probably mainly mattresses and things. And so, you know, I don't know what bulky items commercial would put out, but if they, you know, if they threw their mattress out.
Well, it's nice of them to do that, but that's out of their realm of responsibility.
You know, maybe we should put this on the agenda for Friday morning.
No, it's the alley pickups. That's what they're picking up. Alleys, yes.
It's just alleys?
So, it's where the mattresses are normally thrown out? By the community, is moving?
Okay, that makes sense.
Dean, I just have one question about...
Wait, it says alley.
Oh, you finished my...
Well, hopefully.
When Bob mentioned that, well, 40% of our residents aren't going to be in the AD project.
Forty percent of the multifamily.
Oh, multifamily, right?
Yeah.
Will that affect our percentage that we're trying to reach?
I think it's a little higher than what we originally thought, but I think there's going to be, and Scott and Javier were talking about it, I think there's going to be a little transition to six months, or people adding, people subtracting. I think after six months, a little better idea, the full number. But that's... In fact, we had talked about it the other day, that even in some of the exempt areas, there may be people calling and they want to participate. And I think we should allow it. It looks to be driven by a mandate.
Okay, any other comments?
So, the recycling ranger may be helpful there.
Okay, we'll receive and file a report. Thank you, Director.
Well, Javier, do you want to make a...
Are you getting that now, Javier?
It's on item number eight as far as the...
So, he has a full item on himself.
Okay, let's go to number four, buyback recycling centers.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. This was a request by the board to bring this back to evaluate the buyback centers that are seeming to be going away here in Costa Mesa. So, Javier Chiqui, will you give that report to you?
Actually, Elizabeth...
We have Denise here.
It will be a short one. Thank you, Mr. Vice President, board members, and Scott and Javier. Well, in this report, you will find 68 recycling centers within 10 miles of the district. The closest one to us I found within three miles is OCC Recycling, Re Planet, and Recycle Recycling. And the centers are open to a minimum of 30 hours a week. They have to be open at least five days a week and at least one weekend. But that's up to the director, recycling director. And you'll find the list of all the recycling centers in the attachment. Any questions?
I was thinking, should we put those three closest on our website?
We do have it on our website. Yes, and we actually have a special highlight for OCC Recycling Center in our upcoming newsletter. So, I've put the materials accepted and the hours of operation.
We talked about having Mike come to one of our meetings so that we can kind of be updated on what's going on with OCC Recycling Center. So, I think we all would agree with that.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
We've requested that. He's been quite busy right now, so we requested it, but he just can't make it right now.
But it would be important.
See how they're impacted by the closing of the state university.
Sure.
Is there someone else from OCC that can do that?
He's probably the best person. Yeah, so we'll see. We'll try to work around the schedule and see what's best when he can arrive here.
And if we're partnering up with them still, that we should, you know, get a little more credit. I mean, it's more or less OCC, but slash, there's more than that.
You're wanting customers.
Dean, don't you have an agreement with them?
Yeah.
As the quantity gone up from recycling, or do you know?
I don't... Can't answer that. I don't know.
Yeah, Mike would be the guy that's... Yeah, Mike's the guy.
Yeah.
Well, it did change quite a little bit when they shut down Garcia. People went to Skater Brothers and, you know, that was a huge, huge amount of tonnage that got picked up somewhere else or not at all.
Okay, thank you. Let's move to buy organic recycling program how-to video.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. You might recall during the town hall meetings when we were informing the public about the proposed program, we're considering a lot... There was a lot of questions out there saying, well, how is this program going to work? You know, how do I use my kitchen pail? Do I store food under the sinks the whole time? And so, there's a lot of confusion out there. So, we thought it'd be best, one way to get the word out is to develop this how-to video. We'll have it on our website. We'll actually show it at upcoming town hall meetings we have in a couple of months here. Do some press releases. It's really a good way to... An easy way to demonstrate how the program works. And so, I'll have Javier upload it, and it takes, I think it's about five minutes. Open to any suggestions, questions?
Since the passage of the Historic California Integrated Waste Management Act in 1989, Californians have successfully diverted over 50% of the waste stream away from landfills. Green waste is used to cover landfills instead of topsoil, and it's also used...
Javier was able to do this when I was going on one drive.
Yeah, see, one second.
Since the passage of the Historic California Integrated Waste Management Act in 1989, Californians have successfully diverted over 50% of the waste stream away from landfills. Green waste is used to cover landfills instead of topsoil, and it's also used to help calculate the 50% mandate of the Waste Management Act, with Costa Mesa achieving 57%. In 2014, Governor Brown signed into law AB 1594 that repeals green waste as an alternative daily cover of landfills. This means the Costa Mesa Sanitary District's diversion rate will decrease to less than 42%. The good news is that CMSD has a plan to exceed the mandate and increase our diversion rate to 75%. Residents of CMSD will be first in Southern California to recycle food scraps. You will be given everything you need to get started. This includes a 65-gallon organic cart, a how-to brochure, and upon request, CMSD will make available a kitchen pail. You can store your kitchen pail on the counter or underneath the sink. If you don't have a kitchen pail, you can use newspaper or a compostable bag. You can place organics directly into the pail or on top of the newspaper or in the compostable bag. You can also line your kitchen pail with newspaper or compostable bag. Ensure those bags are compostable and bear the symbol. Bio-degradable is not the same as compostable. And be sure not to use plastic bags as they contaminate the organic product. Compostable bags can be purchased at Target, Mother's Market, and will soon be available at your local grocery stores. Most people don't find that the kitchen pail has odor. But if you do, you can sprinkle baking soda in your pail. We recommend emptying your pail after every move. But you can wait until the pail is full before emptying the contents into the organic cart. You can also place the newspaper and compostable bag full of food scraps directly into your cart. Your kitchen pail can be washed by hand and is also dishwasher safe if you remove the lid. Green waste can be placed directly in your organic cart. Green waste includes grass clippings, tree branches, twigs, stumps, leaves, weeds, bushes, and sharps. If you need an additional organic cart, please contact CMSD at 949-645-8400. And a second organic cart will be delivered to your home at no charge. Residents with more than two organic carts will be charged $8 a month per cart. There are a surprising number of food scraps that can go into the organic cart. These items include fruits, vegetables, meat, poultry, seafood, eggshells, rice, beans, cheese, bones, frozen food, tea bags, coffee grounds, bread, grain, and pasta. You can even pour kitchen grease into your cart. There are a number of items that are very important to keep out of your organic cart. Plastics are the biggest contaminants, but also avoid diapers, wipes, and styrofoam products. For a list of items that can and cannot go into your organic cart, there is a reference guide in your how-to brochure or visit the district's website at www.cmsdca.gov. Your organic cart will be picked up on the same day and from the same place as your trash and recyclables. Place it in the street, close to the curb, with the front facing the road. Your organic cart can be rinsed out with a hose. Please make sure the water does not wash down the storm drain. You're probably wondering where the organics go after your cart is emptied. The organics get emptied here at CRNR's transfer station in Stanton where contaminants are picked out. Then the material is loaded in semi trucks and driven to CRNR's $20 million anaerobic digestion facility in Paris, California, where state-of-the-art technology transforms the organics into renewable natural gas and fertilizer. We believe using this technology will allow the district to achieve diverting 75% of the waste stream away from landfills. Renewable natural gas is the cleanest burning fuel on the market and will be used to power trash trucks, while fertilizer will be used at local farms. For more information about the organics recycling program, contact the district at 949-645-8400 or visit our website at www.cmsdca.gov.
That's very good.
It's very good.
Since the passage of the Historic California Integrated Waste Management...
One thing I don't see in there, and I wonder about, is the animal waste.
Well, even though we've gone back and forth about this with CRNR, you can put animal waste in it, but we're just not promoting it, so...
Because I've told people they could.
That's fine, and they can't.
But then I was looking for that, and I didn't see it.
Was it on the list? There was a list that they posted on...
Yeah.
Well, I don't think it'd be very appropriate to put a big dog poop right here on the table, you know? So, he's referring to the brochure, the information brochure that we referenced.
You can say poop.
Director Schaefer, one of the problems is that people always wrap their dog poopie in plastic bags.
Yeah, they do.
So, those plastic bags, I suppose...
If they put it in a compostable bag, it'd be fine.
Well, it's just no comment on it.
Another question along the same line is grease. You know, most people put it in a coffee can.
Yes.
Put a lid on it and put it in the...
I do.
But that's not good.
No, they just pour it right in. If it doesn't solidify, most, a lot of grease will solidify for, you know, in the can. So, suggestion is before it solidifies, just pour it in your cart.
Good point.
Which is kind of sloppy, but...
Yeah, that's an option.
We recommend having a newspaper and then just trickling it indoors.
That's a good point.
So, it doesn't get...
Yep, yep, yep.
We can add it to the website.
How would you do that? Just on the list?
Just on the list, and we have an FAQ on organic section. And I'm sure residents are going to have a lot of questions about what to do with their dog poop or their grease, and we can just make recommendations.
I can ask a very suggestion, wrap it in a newspaper. All the residents get the newspaper on a weekly basis. They're going to have it at the door, and then use it.
That's a good point that Arne brings up, because that'll be a question that'll come up all the time.
You mean, I have to walk my dog with a newspaper?
Well, no. For that, I wouldn't recommend wrapping a newspaper, but, I mean, I can't find compostable dog poop bags. So, I don't know where you would find it. I think you would have to...
Need a compostable bag.
Yeah.
Well, we might contact pet food, or the pet stores, because there are...
Yeah, I'm sure they've got them somehow.
Yeah, there are biodegradable...
Yeah.
People have been trying to think in terms of ways to get this to the sewage treatment plant for quite a while, or, you know, certain people in the community. And, you know, so we had to tell them, don't use recycled plastic bags, use biodegradable bags. And now, we probably should have been telling them compostable bags. So, maybe those stores should be contacted. And then they could put it in the trash can or in the organic store.
PetSmart, or that list of stores.
Yeah, we need to make a list of pet stores in addition to food and convenience stores.
Because that's very problematic. Everybody's walking and has animals.
Have a vendor that they can go to. Do we know vendors for this?
No, what we're doing is we're going to send a letter out to... Well, we got up to 10 stores right now, but one, the pet stores, and now we'll send a letter talking about the program and how to collect compostable bags and encourage them to stock those for their customers.
Hopefully, partner with us and, you know...
That's a good idea.
Okay.
Any other comments?
So, that'll be material, it'll be good for the digest.
It was really good, though.
Very good. Yeah, very good presentation.
Thank you. Can we show that at, like, their special events also?
Absolutely. Yeah, we're going to have to do. We wanted to show it to you first, but now we won't. So, I'll make it go in public now.
It's too bad. How long would that be?
What's that?
Well, we just saw, how long do you think it is? Five minutes?
It's about five minutes, yeah.
I was thinking sometime in El Paso, I mean, it'd be interesting.
Well, I am going to show it to El Paso.
Are you?
Yeah.
Good, okay. Because that'd be perfect for sitting in and water to hear.
Okay, thank you. Let's move to number six, proposal ordinance requiring all private sewer pump stations. So, monitoring alarm system.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Vice President. Really, we're here just seeking some feedback from the board on what you want us to... If you want to go into structure, what do you want us to put in the ordinance? There's definitely some issues that you have to... You should be aware of. You know, what happened, you know, I listened to the staff report, like, what happens if they can't afford an alarm system? You know, they're about, you know, $4,000, $5,000, and they're $3,000 a year on monitoring services. Who's going to enforce it as well? Is Ed going to go on the property and enforce it? I mean, he's the only one that can really write the citations. Or do we... Or do our store guys go on there? You know, that's another issue, who's going to enforce it? So, you know, those are some of the issues you need to consider. Also, I'll say, if we go through the administrative citation, which we'll do, first offense would be $250 fine, second offense would be $500, and we'd have to $1,000 for a third offense. So, it can get kind of expensive. So, just need some direction on what the board wants to do on this. I mean, we can bring back an ordinance with this, but just need to consider some of the... How to enforce it, Director.
What criteria did staff use to even think in terms... In these terms? Is it... How many private SSO... Private pump station SSOs do we have every year?
Help me out, Rabdo. I know it's Calmas, right?
Yeah. This was generated by the discussion at Calmas. They've had, Scott, how many was it?
Four. They have about four to... Four or five the last couple eighteen months, yeah.
Yeah, it was a reset.
Were there any other private pump stations that have had one that we know of? I mean, if they're relatively rare, I don't think we should even be thinking in these terms. I mean, we dealt with the pump station that had an issue, and they complied. And they could afford to comply, apparently, or they had been battling us.
Well, there's also another suggestion of how we do make it from today on. I see private pump stations come across during plan check frequently now. So, we could make that... You know, as a capital... As a capital cost, that cost is very small, because the pump station probably be $30,000 to $50,000.
So, would we be actually grandfathering in?
That's a possibility. You could grandfather them in, and then if they have a problem, hit them at that point, and then just make the new ones do it.
Maybe we can say a parentheses on the grandfather that, you know, if anything should arise, then...
Right.
I like that suggestion, because I was the one that brought this up based on the comments, but not knowing the cost and how many we have, $30,000, $40,000, that's a lot of money, correct?
Well, I'm sure a lot of them have it already, because not having it is not a smart idea. To have a private pump station that has a light on it and maybe a bell, and that's out in the parking lot or in your parking structure, you're never going to hear it. So...
The other thing is, right now, we're doing strategic planning. So, maybe we can put into whatever we decide on into the strategic plan right now, so that the input will be there.
Right.
Well, I think the strategic plan should begin to look at the basis for why we're making the decision. And I haven't heard enough explanations. You know, we've had one pump station that seemed to be out of control. And I guess we must have the power... We must have the power to make them do this?
Yes, well, we have jurisdiction... Well, retroactively is a different question than upfront. We do have jurisdiction over onsite sewers, private onsite sewers. We have jurisdiction. City gave that up, we have it. So, as part of... So, as part of review, we have it. To retroactively do it, that's another story. That's a different legal question. And I would say that when a private pump station goes in, to not have it, I think, is below standard because just all they come with is a light and a bell. You turn the bell off, there's a light on and sewage pouring out and there's a light on. No one's going to do anything.
Well, I still think that we should better understand who has it and who doesn't have it and potentially review when new ones go on that they do, that they are doing it. You know, and if they are, then we don't need to, you know, to add another regulation.
I don't think we have an ordinance now to require it under for new ones coming in.
Well, I don't think you need an ordinance. I think just require it and just say, should be, show this in your panel or please identify the SCADA and the minimum requirements are X.
Do you think that's the best way to go or should we have-
Well, that will take care of all new.
I know. I mean, you think we can do that with just you telling them that?
Absolutely.
And you have an inventory.
Right. So, you could do, you could make all new ones just as part of policy. I mean, we also have minimum standards for design, too. We don't let somebody, you know, use a trash can as a wet well. I've not seen that.
You don't think we need a policy, written policy, though?
Well, we don't have any standards that are written for private pump station. We just use, we mirror our public standards, which are same functionality, same methods, same protections. So, you could certainly require all new ones to have them. It might be nice, though, because we have, because we have Calmus problem, it would be nice that if somebody did have a spill and didn't have SCADA, to right there say, oh, got to have it. So, that could be something that could be drafted into our operations code.
That's the direction I'm kind of going. I think it's better to have it in the right, just so we refer back to it some way, but I don't know. Do you think it's better? What do you think, Scott?
Sure, we can come back, we usually have a written policy, standard procedures that will require Rob to ensure that new private pump stations have an alarm system that's satisfactory to our, to us. You know, that has an alarm system that notifies the manager or the property manager, you know, via text or email like ours, you know, 24 hours a day. Yeah, we can definitely bring that back for you to consider.
I think that'd be wise.
Do you want also, going back, talking about what Director Uden said, we could go and inspect the other 30 stations and see-
I didn't say that.
Well, you want us to find-
I don't want to get involved in, I don't want to get involved. I don't want to-
You wanted us to know who has and who doesn't?
Yes.
So, that's what I was going with. We go and on the property-
I misinterpreted, I apologize.
You want us to go on the property and find out who has and who doesn't, if you have that inventory?
Well, there may be other ways to gather that information and we have gathered information about pump stations before and I don't know if that's included in here.
I do recommend, though, that you add in that written policy in the operations code that if somebody has a spill related to notification, that they be required to have it or to install it. Or otherwise, it'll happen again.
Exactly. I totally agree with that, yeah. I'll just follow what Bob's suggestion be to find out how many people have it.
Well, we know how many have, we know who they are.
Yeah, we can contact them.
We just contact them. Hey, do you have a watch or not?
Well, Gemini may be the first pick because likely Gemini and other local people are needed to maintain them.
Right.
I mean, so there's ways, you can minimize them.
Then Art and I, we're going over all the policies and procedures, we could always enter that in once you, you know, okay? So, once this is established, we'll just-
It's definite that we are concentrating on emergency response as a district and it's clear that that same standard should apply to private as well, that your emergency response needs to be, have a level of protection for the water supply. So, I think adding those two things in would be beneficial.
Yes, I do, thank you. Any other comments?
Lastly, I'll say it again, not having it when it was put in was substandard. So, it's not like we're requiring anything above and beyond. It should have been in there to begin with.
Thank you, Rob. Okay, let's go down to Affordable Care Act, Cadillac Tax.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Vice President. Denise Mikez will be giving us the board.
Thank you, Vice President Perry, board members and guests. Thank you, Javier. Yeah, we have to go slide show at the top. Slide show and then from current slide. Talk about this in a minute, but I believe you're all familiar with the Affordable Care Act, also known as Obamacare, the federal law that was put into place to provide Americans access to affordable healthcare. And as a result of that law, there's a number of provisions that employers have to comply with. As a small agency, there are several that we don't have to comply with, which are a little more complicated, but this particular line, the Cadillac Tax, is something we will have to comply with. It takes effect in 2018 and it's an excise tax that's on high-cost medical plans. And the way that you determine, determine if a plan is high-cost is you take the premium amounts that employers and employees pay for the annual period and then you compare it with the threshold. So, this document is showing you at the very top what the threshold is for an employee-only plan, so it's 10,200 annually. And then for a family plan, which would be any plan that's employee plus one or more, would be 27,500 annually. So, all of our plans at Costa Mesa Sanitary District are offered through Calpers and so this list shows all of those different plans. And you've got it separated on the top by the employee-only plans and on the bottoms by the employee plus one or more plans. And so, the first column provides the description of the plan. The second column provides the benefit tier, so that's employee only or employee plus one, et cetera. And then the next column is providing the annual premium amounts for those plans. And this particular document, which you may not have in your packet, this also includes the cost for us to provide an employee assistance program because that's a cost you need to also include. And it's about $500 a year for us to provide that benefit to our employees. So, if you look at this, you can see where our plans rank as far as those thresholds go. And none of them are meeting the threshold right now, but we have a few that are close. If you look at the highlighted items, those are the plants that are close to meeting the threshold. So, the next column is saying, would this tax apply today? Well, no, it wouldn't apply today, but if you go to the next column, if you set that percent of an increase, then we're going to have to meet that tax requirement. So, for the first plan, it's going to require a 9% increase in the next three years to meet that threshold. So, that's about 3% increase a year and that's not unreasonable with healthcare. I mean, you're looking at maybe 6% to 8%, even more. Our cost at CMSD went up about 30% this last time on the budget, so it's pretty significant. So, not, at some point, all these plans will probably meet the high-cost threshold because the escalator that you're using in the law is not even enough to meet the cost of the plans as they typically go up. So, luckily, our plans are offered through Calpers and Calpers is on top of it. They're keeping track of where our plans at in relation to the Cadillac Tax and they're making changes to keep those plans tuned. But we just need to basically stay tuned and see what happens. There's nothing to do at this point, but this is something that's coming and we wanted you to be aware of it.
How much is the tax?
The tax, oh, sorry. The tax is 40% of the cost that exceeds the threshold amount. So, anything that's over 10, 200 for the single plan or 27, 500 for the family plan. So, you'd be taxed 40%, which is a big amount.
Yeah, in your agenda packet attachment on Cadillac Tax fact sheet, you go to page two and there's a sample on how they will tax that. So, like, they gave example, like, for self-only coverage, if an individual plan is $12,000 and the threshold is $200, the difference is $1,800. That $1,800 is going to, that's going to be the taxable, it's going to be taxed, you tax times that by 40%. The tax is going to be $720, so that's how that works.
That's why we brought it to your attention to look into it. We don't want to get hit with a 40% tax and not be prepared for it. There's other ways to deviate from that. It's total top of bounds, isn't there?
Yes, well, definitely, we eliminate those high-cost plans. It also depends on what plan your employees are going to select. I don't even think we have any employees on those plans right now, so we wouldn't be impacted because we're not paying them costs. But, yeah, I think this isn't only going to be an issue for us, it's going to be an issue for everybody. So, I'm sure there's, all the providers are looking at ways to keep these costs down because the cost is actually going to be absorbed through the medical providers and then they're going to pass it on to the consumers.
So, this is a sample of the attachment, so it's a good example on how a tax works.
It's like a luxury tax in sports.
Yeah, exactly. That's, I think that's why the school district is having the teachers pay more into themselves so they don't get hit with the Cadillac Tax. That's what happened this year. They additional like four, $300 or $400 more a month per teacher. So, that's what happened this year. So, that's, and they have a lot of employees, so, even though we have a limited amount of employees, we still have to be aware of that 40% tax.
Yes, absolutely.
Yes. So, this is something that we'll just have to keep a close watch on.
Yes.
And if you're not here to help us, let us know.
I'm going to, Diana will. But every year at Open Enrollment, you'll get the new rate so you can look at where the plans are falling in relation to the Cadillac Tax.
Well, yeah, it comes with a, there's a line right there in blue that if you select a plan, it tells you tax. So, you see that going there?
So, right now, we don't, we wouldn't have to pay any tax.
It doesn't come into effect in 2018. I thought it was 2007.
If the employee pays more, it doesn't matter.
2008. So, we just have to be aware in the future, so we have to adjust salaries to reflect what-
That doesn't matter what you paid for?
The amount that we pay. Exactly, that's the key.
I want to make sure we're on the same page, that the costs that you use to determine whether or not you're exceeding the threshold are the costs that the employer and the employee pays combined. So, whatever all of those costs are annually, that's the cost.
I wasn't aware.
So, they gather it for some other reason.
So, it's a combined total of employee and the employer pays?
Yes, absolutely.
So, it's going to be possible, I think, of course. Any other questions? Okay, very good. That's informed.
2018.
Yeah, I thought it was 2017, but you were on top of it.
I need to be planning for it at that point.
Yeah, 2017. Okay, thank you. Number eight, Solid Waste Association North America Organics Collection Training Course.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. This was the course that Director Uden was mentioning earlier that we shared at the Organic Ad Hoc Committee. And this was a training seminar up in Long Beach back in February, trying to ask questions on certain agencies on what to do with the new laws in organic recycling. So, I sent Tom here up there and I've asked Hubbard to report out on what he learned at training. So, turn over to Hubbard.
Yes, thank you. It was a great training, very comprehensive. It was an all-day training from 9:00 to about 5:00 PM. And we talked about, first of all, where the state is, where they want to go and the needs for separation. This is something that is not going to go away and it's something that agencies, especially California, need to jump aboard and start tangling ahead of how they're going to address this issue and how they're going to report to the state and what their plan is. And the overall message is that most of agencies are going to go to try to develop some type of compostable, just because there's not enough infrastructure set up to offer AD for all kind of point. They're hoping that the private sector invests in maybe some utility as a private sector sees that California is serious and that they're going this way, that they're hoping that that may change and then offer those cities that do, decided to do composting to switch over to AD facility. So, we're definitely ahead of the game in that respect, so a lot of agencies are going to look at what we're doing to see our success and maybe go the AD route. Just to give an idea, what we talked about is just for, first of all, the need to separate the collection, the characteristics of organic material, there's a lot of people who get confused of what is organic, what is not, what can go in the bin, what cannot. And the difficulty that Calpers has, that every jurisdiction, every holler is different. One holler, CRNR may accept grease and another holler may not. So, there's going to be, there's going to be a huge learning curve for residents in California to kind of really understand this concept and what it means to, you know, switch over to the organics collection. And then service type level, they talked about some of the difficulties may be on the commercial side. One example here, Costa Mesa, we have 12 to 19 different haulers. Try to keep track of what everybody does may be difficult. Here is easier for us that we have one holler, one method, we know how it's going to work. So, trying to get everyone to understand. And the cost associated, it talks about collection equipment, getting the bins, the pails, how are you going to fund that? Would residents use it? We'll talk about that. And then having a, developing an organics recycling plan. And the biggest thing is the political will, as our board recently passed it, that was a huge step, a lot of districts are having problems with, like, what wrestling, what they're all, do we implement, do we not? They have no choice, California, we're headed this way. There's going to be a lot of work in this subject matter ahead in the future of California, so nothing is going to go away. So, we're in a very, very good position. They talked about organic collection design, different systems, how it works. And then one of the things that they highlighted was public education outreach not stop. They said it's going to be continuing, that agencies need to reach out to their communities on a monthly, quarterly, as much as they can to really push this message because, again, basically California, they're, this is where we're going. We're going to, we need to get organics out of landfill, so this is something that is going to continue. So, education should be ongoing and we should budget accordingly to really push the message and make the system easier and have residents understand. And they also talked about some collection, like case studies, some of the challenges that some agencies are having. But, again, it just kind of shows that we're on the right track and a lot of agencies are kind of looking at us towards the AD side. And, again, they're saying about 70, 80% of California are going to go on composting now until we see more private investment to go to do that. So, it was really great. It was, like I said, very comprehensive. They give examples of public outreach, how flyers ideas to share with your residents and just kind of stay tuned because this is not going away. It was really good.
I have two questions for you, just, did you have a chance to discuss what we're doing with the group that you were with?
Yes, I did.
Okay. And then my second question, I didn't really realize that it affects the commercials also. Does the city know that they have this potential headache coming?
Sure they do, like, you know, don't know, but assuming they do because they have the majority of the trash. I don't know how they're going to handle it.
That's a good question. They talked about what happened to residential, commercial always follows. First, it was recycling, whether it's recycling, now it's mandatory commercial recycling, now it's residential organics, now it's mandatory organics. There's definitely a trend that the state follows and they're the biggest generator, so to use their work to get them low hanging fruit, they need businesses to jump aboard as well and this is happening. So, it's kind of like their, kind of FOI will that California is going to, a lot of haulers need to plan accordingly and how they do that is going to be a challenge because a lot of businesses don't have the enclosures, they barely have enough enclosures to add a recycling. Now, to add a third for organics, it's going to be, it's going to be tough. So, the logistics is something that, depending jurisdiction if it works out, but us, we're just residential. We're ahead of a lot of people in California, so we're in a really good position. It's just the commercial side that's going to have. Uh, it's just the commercial side, that's gonna have a, a challenge.
You know, one of the, uh, areas of, when we were deciding to go with C R, R N R's, uh, program, one of the things that influenced, I know all of us, was the fact that composting installations in Orange County are very hard to locate, and are very hard to get licensed, if not almost impossible to get licensed. And these peo, these other entities are gonna be out of luck. I mean, I, I, I mean, Dean, uh, isn't that the case, that it's, I mean, there are, there are a few composting, uh, sites in, uh, Orange County, but far and in between.
Very, see, we, um, it's not just Orange County having the same, having the issue. Los Angeles County, I was in a meeting in San Diego County last week. They're, they're in a real world, first San Diego, if you're gonna have any facilities. So, one of the things that we, I tried to talk to them about focusing on was find the type of facilities closer to where the markets are, not in urban areas, like what we're doing in Paris. For example, out in Riverside County, and Imperial County, which is well agri culture, there's a dire need for fertilizer, organic, agri culture. They, they have to reduce their water usage, so they're adding compost and stuff to the, the agricultural fields. So, I, I tried to scare them away from trying to cite facilities in urban areas. Transport it, transport your raw material up to where market it. Um, the other thing about composting facilities is that, is that in the air basin that we're at, you're not gonna cite it. There's too many gases to leave composting out. Can you do it out in Imperial County? Maybe, but that's gonna be shut down, too. And, um, what we're, what we're in the process of doing, building a, a large composting facility just across the California border in Arizona. It'll be about a fifty-acre site, it'll take several thousands tons a day, incorporating the transportation into our costing. But the market out there in Arizona, in Imperial County, I mean, there's much compost that we can produce, they've, they've got a place for it. And, yeah, out, out there, will they, will they become California someday and restrict those things? Yeah, they will, but I don't know if it'll be in my lifetime.
Robert, comment?
I have two questions for Javier. Number one is, can you go over again, once the A D becomes not allowed to be used for the landfill, what everybody's recycling rate is gonna go down to? And number two, have you or maybe C R N R had any knowledge or experience with what Anaheim is doing, with their Anna Grow, I think it's, A D plant?
Yeah, that's familiar. Yeah, the Anna Grow, we, we actually talked about it about a year ago, and I think it was a study session here. Um, there, they've come out to take a look at our plant, because they want, we're probably gonna go that direction instead of the Anna Grow. They still haven't permitted. There's no permit down on that, they wanna put it at the utility yard. Um, I think there's six, eight years on. The, the, Javier can answer your other question, but on most, every city we have are gonna be a non-compliant without, um, A Ds.
That's what my, that's what I'm saying. So, if the A D can't be allowed, or won't be allowed, everyone will fall below fifty percent?
That's correct. Majority of California cities will fall below, us, which is fifty, about forty, seventy.
Well, our agency, I think staff has told us at one time or another that it would go down to maybe forty-two percent, because-
But we'll jump up to seventy-five?
Hopefully.
That's the idea, because all the, right now, the, um, they said, okay, no more, we can't take grass anymore. You can't, you can't use grass as alternative any cover. Um, so now, that's gonna be, uh, clogged, if you take it to the, um, to the landfill, it's gonna be, it's gonna be heavy, you know? First of all, grass is heavy, especially with wet, so we pay that, that, on that. But if, that way, we'll, uh, we'll be able to take it to, and use this, and, uh, so. Grass, I mean, sure, that was one example, was supposed to, so that's what, where, I don't know the math.
We, we have to, we probably will end up having to work with contaminated grasses that end up at, um, end up at the MIR. And those can't go to the A D facility. So, if we need more recycling, now those grasses probably are gonna have to be going to some compostable or composting site. And there's gonna, you know, there are people that won't, won't comply. And those will be contaminated grasses, huh?
So, the, the law and the A D is plenty, plenty.
Any other comments? That's a good report.
Cool, thank you.
Okay, uh, number nine, future study session items.
You know, we brought this up before. Uh, we were in, I think it was, was it a Waco meeting where they brought up a, an insurance account? Remember that, that approach? Uh, which kinda ties in with what we were talking about earlier. But, you know, uh, I don't know what specifically they called that program. You recall what, what it was?
Mike, Mike brought that a couple times, too, they, they have those.
But, uh, I would, I would encourage us to have a session on, or have that as, as an item on one of our study sessions.
Let's, let's discuss that Waco?
No, it was a Pers, it was a Pers-
Was it Waco?
Pers guy, it may have been, it might have been-
He was a Pers guy.
It might have been at, uh, Izzard. It was one or the other.
It was either Izzard or Waco, but, um, Mike knows, you know, he, he's more familiar with that.
Yeah, it's something, a-
But you establish an account, and, and it's like a, a savings account, almost, and you have access, you know, it's, it's like, I don't know.
But Denise, Denise-
You know what I'm talking about? I don't know what I'm talking about.
There's some, there's-
Like a personal insurance savings account. Let's figure this out together.
The movement, the movement to, the movement in the healthcare industry to a different industry, and others are trying to move their health insurance as to this, uh-
Health savings account?
Right, yeah, yeah, yeah.
H S A, yeah.
Yeah, where the, uh, consumers pick it up more of the cost, because you've got some kind of savings bank to pay for the higher deductible.
Exactly, yeah, yeah. We, we thought we oughta at least explore that in a, a study session, you know? It seemed to be, that, that gentleman who gave the presentation seemed to think that it was heading in that direction, so.
Yeah, typically, if you provide one of those plans, you provide it with a high deductible plan. It's gotta be high deductible, so we'd have to look at our plans and see if we're offering a high deductible plan.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we can, we can do that, and, and they report back.
And it makes the participants be more participating. Makes them participate in a different way.
They have conscious decisions to make in, in, right, so.
Right, you don't go to the emergency room for a stub toe, or something. That raises the rates of the-
Will, will that affect our rate versus what the employees pay? You know, because that's the bottom line, is the combined total of both.
Right. Um, no, that, that's just gonna help the employee to have, put aside some money to pay for the cost. So, it's not gonna affect the overall, um, well, it would, because if you're doing a high deductible plan, those plans are cheaper, so.
It encourages the employee to be proactive, to save that money, because it is handled, it, it's made available to the employee in different ways.
That would be something for us to listen to again, just as a possibility.
Okay.
Because even though we're four years away, but, or three years away, you still-
We are currently offering already to employees a retiree health savings plan. So, when you retire, you have that type of, uh, plan in place. But we don't have anything for current employees, and I believe that's because our plans aren't high deductible plans. But, uh, we can definitely look into that.
Is there any other things that we'd like to add?
Well, just, just my question on the C D waste, if, if staff or C R N R, you can make some estimates of, um, why, why those increases are occurring. And, you know, then, then we can think about what to do about it.
One, one possible, thank you, one possible way to look for some correlation is to go back and look at, for years and years, we had thirty-five thousand tons per year like clockwork. And then, all of a sudden, it went up, and it just kept going up. And it looked like it was a function of the economy. And it went up to like forty-three thousand tons. So, you could go back and look at those years, and look at how the economy affected it, whether those were good years, or what kind of recovery years, and say, that, that's what made it go. But we were searching for answers way back then, too.
Yeah, I remember that, I, I, I think you're right on. It probably, it's probably the reason, you know?
Right, and, but Director Uden also makes a good point that C and D is not allowed in the container. So, how did it go up? Is it, you know, just beneficial shopping, uh, you know, two-thirds of our economy is shopping?
Well, once, once, if we get any data, then we can make some decisions or not.
We definitely have the, the, kind of just talk with data where it's, it's available.
If we can look at that, maybe, just to compare it in the study session.
A, a book.
What's up to you? Anything else we need to add? We just go to the staff, too. I thought it was good that you brought up the two things I like, you know, to talk about, it was nice. Nothing, anything else for the, for the group? Mr. Mosier, do you have any comments at all? Let's, we're gonna turn the meeting and, uh, see you guys break the board.
Did, did you have to sell out of form to get these items on?
No, it's probably, that's-